Good morning, all. September 25th, 2025, Jackson County Planning Commission, 9:00 AM. We're going to have a hearing for Jackson County Planning File Number 439-25-00003-LRP.
Do you want me to have a roll call or not?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have a roll call first. Patty?
Yeah, one second. Can you just use your liquor and go back to the beginning? Commissioner Daley?
Here.
Commissioner Elliott?
Here.
Commissioner Bennington?
Here.
Commissioner Lavigno?
Here.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve from previous meetings, I understand, correct?
Correct.
So we'll get right into it. This is a public hearing on consideration of a minor comprehensive plan map and minor zoning map amendment to change the comprehensive plan map designation from rural residential land to industrial land and zoning map designation from rural residential -5 to light industrial located at 2,000 Rogue River Drive. Paige Stevens and Brad Engel are the applicants. A number of items I must address before, prior to starting this hearing. Approval criteria used in making this decision are listed in entirety in the staff report. Please direct your testimony and evidence toward applicable approval criteria. You may also direct your testimony to other criteria or policies of the comprehensive plan, land development ordinance, or other land use regulations which you believe apply to the decision now before the Jackson County Planning Commission. Remember that a failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the planning commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to the issue will prevent appeal on that issue to the Land Use Board of Appeal. All participants who wish to speak must sign up on the sign-up sheet provided.
And it is, yeah.
Looks like I have two entries there this morning.
That just go on forever?
The county is making a verbatim recording of this hearing. In the event of an appeal, it will probably be necessary to transcribe it. Therefore, when you testify or comment, please speak loudly and clearly so that your testimony will be recorded. Begin by identifying yourself so that anybody reading a transcript of the record will know who is talking. We need to have you clearly identify yourself with name and address for the record. Any written comments or other items of evidence must be submitted to the clerk to be marked as an exhibit for the record. So today's procedure will be as follows. First, commissioners will indicate whether or not they've had an ex parte contact or have a conflict or have conflicts of interest. Second, we will have a report from the county planning staff, and commissioners may have questions of the staff at this time. Third, we will hear from the applicant. Fourth, we will hear from those in favor of the amendments. Fifth, we will hear from those opposed to the amendments. And sixth, we will hear then from those wishing to speak from a neutral position on the amendments. Seventh, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to any testimony or evidence. Testimony from the public and agencies will be limited to five minutes. Anyone needing more time to testify than allotted should submit their additional comments in writing. Finally, once everyone had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing and associated public record will be closed. Unless the public hearing is continued by the commissioners to a future date, the public hearing will be closed for deliberation by the commissioners. Once the public hearing and public record are closed, the chair will call for deliberations prior to making a decision. All right, so at this time, I'd like to ask all commissioners if they had any ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest.
I have none.
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 None. Okay, Charles is the staff report, so help me give your presentation.
All right, thank you, commissioners, or commissioners. Charles Benning, Planner 3, 10 South Oakdale, Medford, Oregon 97501. So we have the application before you as a request for an amendment to the Jackson County Comprehensive Plan by taking an exception to statewide planning goal 14 for a property at 2,000 Rogue River Drive. I'd like to start out, oh, well, okay, a little sensitive there. Here is the applicant's site plan of the subject property on your screen. The subject property is currently 16.59 acres but has an approval to divide the property into three 5-acre parcels. You can see the lines there indicating that the partition, that approval is not, has not been perfected, so those conditions have not been met, but it is approved.
Does that have a life?
Yes. I believe two years. Yep. And they could get an extension, I think, on that as well, but, and it was fairly recent, so it's fairly solid. This is a picture of the site. It's a current photo of this showing the state of the subject site. The county records indicate that the last business at the site was Alumaweld, and Alumaweld is a boat building business that moved to White City in 2004 as shown on this aerial or another Google image that's recent that shows the Alumaweld facility is really in White City, per our records. The next map I have here is a map indicating about 90 properties committed to industrial use that are outside an urban growth boundary or urban containment boundary. The red properties are generally zoned, general industrial. The yellow properties are zoned, light industrial, and there's a few orange properties that are hard to see, but they're out there that are rural limited industrially zoned. I can see you're looking at the map. I'll let it hold for a minute. We can come back to it if we need to. The next thing I'd like to bring up is, on page 129 of the record, is a memorandum from the applicant's attorney. Staff wanted to walk through this just for a little bit. In the introduction of the memo, the attorney states some basic background facts about the site and makes some assumptions that were used to frame the questions at hand. Key statements in the intro include that general industrial and light industrial zoning requires public sewer and water, which the site does not and will not have. Also, the rural limited industrial zoning requires a rural location dependent on a specific natural resource or would be incompatible with an urban location, which the attorney states the site is not. The attorney also quotes ORS 197.8291, which states that a local government's interpretation is entitled to deference, which, when consistent with the express language of the Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Regulations, if its provisions are ambiguous. I think I need a little water here, one second. Thank you. Page 133 of the record, the attorney asks two questions. Is there ambiguity with applicability of Policy 8? And the answer is no. The LDO and the Comprehensive Plan are very consistent in the required application of Policy 8 for new and expanded committed to, expanded areas committed to any industrial use. Committed industrial areas exist outside of an urban growth boundary or urban containment boundary, as indicated on the previous map, even if the site was considered committed, which is debatable. The proposal is an expansion. The attorney also asks, is there ambiguity with determining which industrial zoning designation is appropriate? Again, the answer is no. The LDO directly points to a rural limited industrial redesignation when expanding non-conforming industrial operations. Establishment of a table over uses, over a single not, limited non-conforming use, is an expansion. The map designations element requires an economic opportunity analysis to justify the appropriate industrial zone. That's explicitly stated. So, conclusion, the memo doesn't justify why light industrial zoning is appropriate, nor is there justification in the economic opportunity analysis for light industrial zoning. The memo asserts the Comprehensive Plan is ambiguous. The map designations element supported by the land development ordinance explicitly state what is required. The memo asserts Policy 8 doesn't apply. Policy 8 is applicable, as specifically prescribed, in the land development ordinance, the general criteria in the map designations element, and in each of the general light and rural limited industrial zoning criteria. With that said, the deficiencies in meeting the criteria are specifically addressed in the staff report. And I've listed the criteria here. All the criteria in red have not been met, and so there's quite a few, and there's several that are repetitive in nature. And with that, the evidence submitted by the applicant does not support the approval of an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan map for a goal 14 exception to change the existing zoning to light industrial. For this reason, staff recommends denial, and should the planning commission disagree with my recommendation, additional findings from the planning commission will be required. Thank you.
Questions from Charles? To Charles? I had, could you explain, like on page 22, you're talking about their zoning designation proposal, and it's a light industrial is what they're going for, but we were asking, we, the applicant does not acknowledge that the county may find rural limited industrial lands, RLI, more appropriate for the area, although no findings were made addressing the RLI section. So what is the difference between light industrial and rural limited industrial?
Yes, thank you. The light industrial has a long list of, and there's a use table that's proposed by the applicants, which strike out of some of the uses, but there's a, typically light industrial, you go to the use table, there's a long list of uses that are allowed in that property. And rural limited industrial, it's specific to a particular use, so you would have, it's much more limited to, and it's supposed to have a net, a local need using a resource in the area, but it's very specific. It's one type of use.
What's the county's position? Which one should they have used?
Well, the rural limited industrial, that's, that's a customized industrial zone. Light industrial is generic, so there's, it's much, we don't have, we would have a specific code just for this particular property if we were to adopt the general, or the, sorry, the light industrial zoning with a special use table just for that property, and that's, we don't have anything like that in the county.
So I would think light industrial would be more appropriate for somewhere near White City or something that's fairly industrialized.
Correct.
In existence.
Urban.
And this versus the rural, which is certainly separate, separates this from White City, industrial or the limited, and you can limit it to more than the light.
Correct.
Okay, I guess that's a question for the applicant, why they chose one or the other, why they didn't submit findings or an explanation of why they chose one or the other. Is that appropriate?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Can you please just go back one slide?
Sure.
Thank you. I don't have a follow-up question. I just wanted to look at it.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, so your recommendation is to deny the application, and based on your testimony and the text of the report, would you characterize your recommendation for denial as strong? In other words, is this a strong recommendation for denial based on your findings? Or is this something that the applicant, or is there room for the applicant to work on an application that might make it compliant? And not trying to, that's not, it's not the way I want it. It sounds to me like your recommendation for denial, based on your testimony and the text, is fairly strong. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a lot of red up there. It does repeat. I think I had, originally, when we get these applications, we're not looking for, to deny any of these things. We want to work as much as we can, and I, there is an incomplete letter that we attempted to get, get the criteria addressed that we thought would, we could take forward to the planning commission and the board. The applicant chose not to submit that. There is a response in the record, but I think it didn't address the requirements that I saw as needing to be met. So yes, I mean, it's a strong.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the tone of your findings, both in the documents and in your testimony. It seems to me that your finding, the findings that you presented indicate a fairly strong recommendation for denial based on the, based on this application.
Yes.
And that's, I would be correct in saying that.
Based on the information in the record, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Charles, if this is denied, then it stays as it is with a non-conforming industrial use and possibly two more residentially zoned parcels? Is that how it would be with the, you said they have a three-lot something?
Correct. They have, they have, it's all residential, rural residential five right now. They have a proposal to divide into three, approval for, so they could have two houses or a house on each property, the two other properties, and they could even have a house on the, on the big one with a, with a giant shop that might be a.
So does, if it's denied, that industrial facility would still be a non-conforming industrial use facility, is that right? Ahah.
Not, not based on what we, on our non-conforming ordinance and.
In the LDO on non-conforming, it's been vacated for over two years, and it's been 21 years.
Thank you, that was my question. So that non-conforming use has gone away?
From, from the evidence that we have on the record.
Right.
Sure.
So that, that, yeah.
So that would revert to just a, just a rural residential five-acre parcel with a big building on it that doesn't, that doesn't have any kind of authority to be used as anything, essentially?
Other than residential.
Yeah.
Oh, so that building could be a resident, could it be?
Yes.
Home residence?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't mean that.
It doesn't, we don't have size limits.
But if denial then puts this not, well, let me go on one more point. Could they revive the non-conforming use some way for that facility?
Well, they may have additional evidence that shows that it, that it's continued.
Oh, so if it, if they can't show that it has, has continued, then no, it's gone.
Right.
But could they reapply for a non-conforming industrial use there, since the buildings there?
Not just based on the building. The building is not a use, yeah. The non-conformity, and it's in the record, it talks about the LDO and discontinuance of a non-conformity, and that even the comp plan talks about in the rural section, it, we don't really want non-conformities out there, so, you know, as they're discontinued, they fall away, then go back, revert to the current zoning. But it, you know, if there's evidence that it's continued as a non-conforming use, it can, it can maintain that intensity in use.
But without that, we end up with this derelict building on an RR5 parcel.
Right.
That nobody is required to do anything about.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, Charles, for the last 20-some-odd years, what, I understand it from the records, it's primarily used for like RV storage inside, and is that what the building is making an income from or something, or what is the present use of it?
I haven't, I don't have any idea. That's a question for the applicant.
Okay, I did read something there, what it was, you know, used for. It was RV storage, but.
Right, off-season, I'm not quite sure what.
Follow up on that just a second, if you will. Would that, excuse me, I just lost a word. Would that suffice to maintain the non-conforming industrial use to have RVs storage?
There is a, it would, partially. There, in the discontinuance, let's see if I can find the page, that would be in, basically, you lose the intensity of a non-conformity. So if you haven't maintained for two years the intensity of having 100 pl- employees working there, that is lost. So you, you know, and this, this non-conforming approval was all limited to within, inside the buildings, correct, right? In the record, it talks about, you can only manufacture, light manufacture boats within the building, store them within the building. So that's what the limitation it was. And with a number of employees that were in this 1977 non-conforming application was approved for, but that hasn't been maintained to that level. So you have to maintain a certain, the level of intensity of your non-conforming to retain it.
So, and I remember reading that, but it's, well, anyway, I'll just go on. If they did store boats and RV, whatever they did inside, then possibly they would have a light industrial non-conforming use capability in that building?
Well, there's, is the storage, I'd have to look at the use table to determine, is storage of RVs in a building industrial use? That might be just an accessory to that.
Might be a stretch, huh?
What's that?
Nothing, go ahead.
But if you had rural residential fives, and you're renting out, say, 20 stalls for RVs and boats and things like that, you're making income. I don't think you could do that if you started from scratch today and say, I have RR5 property, I'd like to make income and, you know, have 20 tenants every month pay me rental fees for storage.
Right. I can't remember whether an RV storage is an allowed use in residential. It probably isn't, but I don't want to speak to that. It might be in our use, the use table on the record. Let's see what, page around 145.
I guess my question had to do with just preserving the industrial non-conforming use, not, not would it be okay to store boats on a RR5 parcel?
Right, and a speculation. I don't, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any idea.
Mr. Chairman? So, yeah, John's asked a good question. So I'm looking at page 20, 27 of the record, and in the upper part, under findings, and specifically under expansion of non-conforming rural industrial operations and findings, your findings seem to indicate, it says, "The LDO clearly requires lawfully established non-conforming industrial operations that have not been discontinued." So what I think I'm hearing is, is that whatever, whatever non-conforming operations that were, that had been undertaken lawfully because of the passage of time and the expiration of those operations, is, is that what we're being told, that you can't, once, once those have expired, expired, you can't get it back? Is that, is that what we're reading there?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just the passage of time. It's the clock in the calendar. Once, once those operations have expired to a certain point, you can't get them back?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And you can't reapply for them, is that correct also?
Correct.
So did the, I don't mean to belabor this very well, ask one more question. Did this non-conforming industrial use predate the RR5 zoning?
Yes.
How did it get there to start with? Was it approved to start with as an industrial use? And was it non-conforming when it started?
Yes, it was, the buildings, I believe, were, or the main building was built in 1968, I think, and was used as a, I think they built school buildings or mobile school, school buildings prior to zoning in 1973, and that's, that's why it had a lawful non-conforming use determination in '77, which.
So when, when the zoning rules were applied, it became a non-conforming.
Correct.
Approved use.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
Other questions for Charles? Okay, I guess we will open the public hearing and accept testimony from the applicants.
Good evening, Commissioner, or good morning, Commissioners. It's all night and very late. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Jay Harland, CSA Planning, with offices at 4497 Brown Ridge.
Same.
How about that? Should I redo it?
Better, much better.
Yeah. Again, for the record, Jay Harland, CSA Planning, with offices at 4497 Brown Ridge. Patty, if you could go back to the slide that the Commissioner Wallen requested be pulled up. So I have brief comments this morning. The staff report essentially takes the position, A, that this is an expansion. Our position is this is not an expansion. It's a right to use, a path to create land use designations that would allow the property to be used as it's physically developed, which is an industrial site. We're not requesting to be able to add more square footage of building or add more land devoted to the use. Not doing either of those things. So it's fundamental disagreement. And then, as it relates to that, that raises sort of all the things in red there. We were prepared to speak to, Mr. Hathaway is pretty narrow legal opinion, but there's a number of legal issues that are raised by the staff report that we're going to need to address. We were prepared to speak to the specific interpretation issue that Mr. Hathaway wrote a memo on for this hearing, but he actually had a conflict when this got scheduled, and given the number of issues that were raised and kind of the way Oregon's process works, we want to have a complete record and respond to all these things, and some of them are legal issues that Mr. Hathaway really needs to respond to in writing. So with that, we would request a continuance for 30 days to give us time to get those into the record and put those in your packet. With respect to the, some of the questions, Mr. Brad Engel is here. He's one of the property owners. He's worked for the person who started Alumaweld Boats, Paige Stevens, who actually passed in the course of this, so the, the property and that business are now in a trust, and they're doing all those enjoyable things. So, but he has, he's worked for the company for 36 years, so with respect to the use of this, going, historically, we'll have him do an affidavit between now and then of sort of what's been, what the building's been used for. But that's ultimately, this is what we think exceptions are for. I don't think it's realistic that this, I mean, that this property. I don't think it's realistic that this, I mean, that this property would go back to a residential use. Like, I wouldn't do that if I owned it. I would sit on it and wait till the rules changed. The property is being taxed at, you know, as industrial land, paying $22,000 a year in property taxes for, you know, as industrial structures and has been for, you know, 20 years or something like that. So it's, it just, it's not realistic that it's going to go back to a residential use. I would sit on it, hold it, maintain it enough for the rules to change sometime. And that's, that's our view of what the exception does. I think the one agreement we have is nonconforming uses are complicated and getting it rezoned to a planned designation and zoning district that would allow it to be, the buildings to be used appropriately for the physical development is, that's what the exceptions process is for and that's why we're requesting it. I will briefly speak to the, and will respond more in writing between now and the next hearing, on the RLI versus essentially the plan designate, the county has one plan designation for industrial, just one. It's industrial, right? It has three zoning districts that you can apply. Essentially, none of them really fit this circumstance. And so that's, that's the request for light industrial. Our proposal was to do light industrial and then there is a compatibility criterion. Our proposal is to have light industrial, but then with specific items that could be found to be not compatible with a rural neighborhood be stricken administratively. I don't think that's a big deal. I mean, is it, is it, you know, sort of unusual in the county? Yes, but that's what exceptions are for, is to do, deal with one-off situations. And back in the olden days when everything was paper, it was pretty complicated to do that. In this day and age, if you just have an overlay in GIS like Medford does it all the time for every time you do zone change, you end up with specific traffic conditions that apply to that property. And then there's a little thing that says restricted zoning that tells the planner, you better go read that, what's in that before you start signing stuff off. So I don't see it as like a major burden. That's one way. It also doesn't really fit the RLI either. And so the other way to do it would be to do it for zoning, which is still industrial land, but for zoning is to turn it around instead of deleting uses, have the planning commission approve an RLI with kind of a list of reasonable uses that the commission would find appropriate for this, you know, rural area, not just one specific use. I will say the RLI is really, contemplates a reasons exception. It's really tailored as a reasons exception where you have some specific thing in a rural area, hasn't been used, there's no pre-existing aspect to it. It's just literally farm or forest land currently, and then you come in and say, I want to do this, fill in the blank thing that has to be done out in this rural area because, for example, there's a mineral resource out there or something like that that only exists in that area and it's very expensive to truck it, for example. So then we want an exception and then you're getting a rural limited industrial just to allow that single use through the reasons exception process. Physically developed exception is a completely different thing and it's really where you have properties that are physically developed for a type of use that isn't, you know, normally allowed in that area and that's what we've applied for. So again, I have this letter from Greg Hathaway requesting continuance for one month and that'll give us time to respond to all the legal issues if the planning commission would be so inclined.
Jay?
Can I ask a question, Jay? So I thought I read this, but the farther we get going, the less I think I remember from reading it. Is the application to change the whole parcel to industrial?
No, and that was part of why we did the partition. I mean, it really is just the buildings and then the area that is, I mean, a bunch of it's paved, right? And it's either all either paved or gravelled for the industrial, you know, related industrial uses.
So you want to end up with one essentially industrial five acre parcel and two RR5 parcels?
Correct. And that is approved. It just hasn't been recorded. The survey part hasn't been done, but the planning part is done.
So the spitting contest apparently is whether that industrial use has been terminated longer than is allowed? Is that kind of what you see as the issue?
I think that's the fundamental disagreement. It's the physically developed exception is about is it physically built for a type of use that's not otherwise allowed? That's sort of the inquiry ends there.
Those are just two incapacities.
Yeah, and getting into the, you know, the who's and what's it. So, I mean, we'll provide that information in an affidavit because Mr. Engel knows what the property's been used for and it's, you know, like the boat building business continued to use that site for various things for years and years and years and years long, I mean, up until very recently. So we'll provide an affidavit to that effect. But, but the physically developed condition is, or exception is really about what's the area built, you know, physically built for versus what the zoning, you know, would allow. And I would point out that the, most of the other ones of these in the county, way back when they got, when the county did its original comprehensive plan, that were built for some industrial areas, those areas, the county designated industrial and a lot of them they designated, for the most part, they designated them for RLI for the use that was there. Since then, the policy has changed at the state level and there's actually some specific statutes that if you were designated industrial in the comprehensive plan as of the date of that statute, which is in 2004, you can do any industrial use, if the county can approve any industrial use on that old industrial site that was in, it's just this particular one didn't get caught. An example would be, we actually did one, Wagner Meters, if you remember when we brought that through the process. I'm quite certain Commissioner Lavignino was on the commission at that point. I'm not sure who else was. But, you know, Wagner Meters is a super interesting company. They, they make moisture sensors for basically most of the concrete construction around the world and they, so when you're, when you're building a skyscraper, you need to, you can't build the next level until the magic moisture curing is done so you can do the next level. And that's what they make. They've been there for years, way back when the county did its original designations. It, it just basically only allowed Wagner Meters to be there. We came back to the county and said, hey, there's been the statutory change. We would like to be able to do any industrial use as the statute allows, which was approved. Wagner Meters is still there, so why did we go through all that? Really, the reason is, is because if you're making significant employment type investments, a lot of times you have to borrow money and the banks don't want to borrow loan money on real estate that is only tied to your business or your exact type of business. It just doesn't work that way, right? So for whatever reason, and I think it may be because this property was bigger than the built industrial area, right? So it was resident, rural residential around it. I mean, I don't know. I can't, I can only kind of guess the history and we've looked through the records, but it's never as clear as you would want it to be. But the educated guess would be this whole area was being contemplated for rural residential. The actual site was much bigger than the developed site and so it got the residential designation as opposed to having the industrial part carved out and the rest of it put in rural residential. So I think that's kind of how we ended up where we are. But to reiterate, I mean, this is what we think the exceptions process is for, so that's why we've applied for it. And we would request a continuance.
Does staff have any objection to a 30-day continuance?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move that on Mr. Harland's request, we grant a 30-day continuance to this...
We haven't closed the hearing yet.
Yep. Well, it doesn't have to, does it? Before I can make a motion?
Some other people might have some questions.
Oh, okay. There's nobody here.
You're not here.
It's okay.
Yeah. Jay, here's a simple question.
Sure.
I've yet to hear from the applicant or you what the future plan or designate, what's the plan for the industrial use in this? So we have a vague idea.
So actually, at the next hearing, they have an LOI with the user and they were busy doing their business and hopefully one of, we're hoping one of them can actually attend and talk about what they do and what they would like to be able to use the property for. And of course, it's a, you know, a letter of intent is sort of an agreement to enter into a contract. That's not the same as, you know, as closing on the, but they're not going to get much past that until this, until at least we're like on to the Board of Commissioners with a recommendation for approval. But we will provide that information in terms of what the company that would like to acquire it and use it wants to do. And it's a pretty neat, cool thing.
I'd like to have a vision in the future too.
Sure.
You know, there's a short-term stuff in front of your face of in the next five years, what, if we get approval here, what the plan is for that.
Yep. Happy.
Then there's continued owners.
Yeah.
When they sell it off, what else is the next person going to do and the next person?
That's...
So this is setting a stage for, you know, indefinite use for that land and irrevocable uses.
That's right. And I think that's why it is important. I mean, we went through the list of permissible uses, right? And Xed out the ones that were like, I don't really think this is appropriate for that area. I mean, we're, you know, if the planning commission sees some other ones or wants to turn it around to RLI and make it in the positive where you can do these things, but it's a list rather than just one specific use that would be done through a reasons exception. I mean, I think we're open, I mean, we're fine doing that and we'll spell that out. And we're happy to provide the information on this, you know, on this company at the next hearing. It's pretty...
Because each new owner of this one fails within a few years, you know, or the new owners have a different perspective, a different idea?
Sure. That's right.
It could go everywhere.
Yeah, and that's why I think you want to have a list of uses that makes sense that from a compatibility standpoint is fine. The other thing I would say too is we're okay with conditions of approval and we, I have talked to the potential acquirer about perimeter landscaping and buffering per the, you know, you know, per the landscape. That's it. Like, we're, they're okay with that, right? And currently, there is none, right? And if this isn't approved, there's not going to be any incentive to do that. You'll just leave it the way that it is.
Right.
And so, you know, they want to be good neighbors and, and they're interested in that and we don't have any problems with conditions of approval to that effect.
So when did you know that you'd want to extend this another 30 days? Is that like just this morning's decision?
It was a couple of days ago. I mean, we find, I mean, I think we finally got the letter in the format Greg wanted it yesterday about 3 o'clock. So...
Okay.
Yeah, because we had staff...
Had enough time, you could have, you know, primed the pump essentially and not have this meeting today, extended it without us being here and then waiting for another 30 days to meet again.
But what's, it's, once it's noticed, you have to have the hearing and then you have to continue it to a time and date certain. So otherwise, the county would have to re-notice it rather than just continue it. It's, it's just the process.
Got it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah. So, Jay, I just have a couple of questions. One's kind of a practical one. So you've read, you've read the report, you've heard the testimony from staff and as, and his testimony this morning was, as the application is currently presented, he, his findings are that it is, has some pretty significant problems. And the, that's just what I heard and what, when I asked him. And so when you do come back, and what I think I heard you say is, is that you plan to address all of these issues that are problematic that staff has when you come back? Yes?
Yes, sir. I mean, I don't, I don't know that the staff is going to agree with the way that we address them, but yes, we will address them.
But you're going to address them.
Absolutely. Hence the continuance.
And the other thing is, is just listening to your conversation with Commissioner Elliott, what I think I heard, and I just want to make sure that I heard this accurately, is that going, going back to page 27 on the record, it says, "LDO clearly requires lawfully established nonconforming industrial operations that have not been discontinued." And then, and then the rest of it. And is it, is it your contention and is it your argument that you're going to provide evidence for that in fact, these, the lawful nonconforming use was not discontinued? Is that what you're going to argue?
There will be two parts to that argument. One is it has been used in some industrial capacity for, you know, up until very recently. So we will, Mr. Engel will provide an affidavit to that effect of what the property is. The other part of it is, we're not applying for a nonconforming use alteration. What we're applying for is an exception so that the built part of the property can be used what it's built for. So our opinion is it's not terribly relevant to the application, but...
Yeah, but it is kind of, it is kind of an A and B thing, I think, is if you can't get the first part, you can't get the second part. If you can't, if you can't argue, I mean, I mean, that's...
I understand that staff's position, but I don't think that's what a physically developed exception is for.
Okay.
It's to look at what it's physically built for.
So you understand that's staff finding, but you, but you...
We disagree.
But you disagree?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So Jay, a procedural question. Brad Engel signed up to speak today? Does he still want to speak?
Oh, I think he checked no. He just wanted to let you know he was here.
Oh, he did. He did.
Yeah.
Never mind. Other questions for Jay? Go ahead and make your motion.
Do you want to close the public hearing? I don't want to do anything wrong. I already did it wrong. Okay.
If we're going to continue the public hearing, we do not wish to close the public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
You didn't...
So what would the date be, Patty?
The next available date for the planning commission would be October 23rd.
Is that 30 days?
No. It would be just under...
Do you want to...
Yeah, 23rd is fine.
Is okay.
Yes, excellent.
Then, Mr. Chairman...
We've checked calendars. That works just fine.
At Mr. Harland's request, I move that we postpone this hearing until October 23rd.
Does he need a second? Because I'll... Okay.
Yes.
Second.
Sarah, second?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallen Daly?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavignino?
Yes.
Okay. So Charles, is this packet then going to be obsolete?
Keep our packet? Maybe look for...
No, no, it's not obsolete.
I'm sorry?
It's, I don't think it's obsolete. It's, we'll be adding to this record.
Okay.
Meeting is closed for today. Thank you for your participation.